All right, it is seven AM. Good evening and welcome to the July meeting of the Town of Milton Planning Board. Ms. Blanchard, would you please call attendance at the board?
Okay, Mr. Mercicano?
Here.
Ms. Pedula?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Vandenza?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Paul?
Yeah, I'm here.
And Timmy Bartow?
Yes. Okay, we have a forum and I would also like to note that we have an attendance, Council Bill Tenny, our engineer Joel Giacchi, and Director of Planning and Codes Bill Lewis, and also Tina Blanchard as our secretary and this is on kind of moderating and hosting things. I'd like to kick off with a pledge of allegiance. Bill, can you show us the flag?
That'll be on Amanda's.
Okay, there we go. I'm going to screen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Flag. To the Republic, to the just damn, one nation, this one, under God. You want me to do this?
I'll let him do it.
Does this for all?
Thank you. Okay, as far as chairman's announcements, once again, we're assuming the planning board meeting, our third such meeting since the virus prevented us from being a person. We continue to kind of clunk our way through sometimes on the technology, so please bear with us. And again, if there's something somebody needs, just raise a hand, let me know, or get Amanda's attention. We can work out any other glitches that we have. We have three public hearings tonight, so I may actually at some point decide to take a five-minute break and let people stretch. What I would do is we'll just reconvene. We won't let people mute, maybe turn off their video, but somewhere around, if we get to nine o'clock, definitely take a short break or whatever. We've got several opportunities for the public to interface with us this evening, and I would ask if you're Zooming with us and want to make a public comment, please use the hand wave feature and alert us as to your interest in how we use the Q and A feature on the bottom and submit a question. However, we will not accept anonymous questions, so we always ask in every instance that you identify yourself. But many of them are Zooming. We have a name with it, but sometimes it doesn't, so if you do a Q and A or something else, let us know your name. If you have dialed in on the phone feature Zoom, and you'd like to make a comment, I'm going to have two ways that you can reach Bill Lewis. The first is you can text him on his cell phone at 518-376-1831, or you can call the town planning offices at 518-884-2764. And he will make note of that and make sure that we get to your questions. We had a little bit of delay in some of the texts last week, so I suggest it might be you want to just use the landline at 518-884-2764. As with our usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, state your address, then present your comments within three minutes or less. We want to accommodate all the public who'd like to address the board, and we ask for your patience as we work through it. We'll continue to have Nancy Pedula as an alternate member in the absence of Margaret Bianchi, who's been with us this now for three months. I know I'll be speaking to Marco over the next month to see what his plans longer term are. The executive orders by the governor have continued to enable us to meet via Zoom or conference call, and they've been extended through August 5th and 6th. We continue to work at changes that allow us to meet as a board in person with interactions with the applicants, staff, and some of the public, but the logistics have not been finalized yet. Perhaps by our August meeting, we may have some details worked out. So I'd ask for the board members in particular, as well as the public to watch for announcements, note as to possible changes in the coming month. We'll do our best to keep everything posted. Okay, with the July announcements, does anyone from the board have an announcement or question to respond to? If not, I'll move to our first act tonight, which is the approval of the minutes from June 17, 2020. Everyone should have their minutes from our 17th floor. Please note that Gina did send a revised set of minutes with some changes. I think she emailed that a couple of days ago, and she agreed to email it today. So everybody should have it. I'll at this point entertain a motion for the approval of the June 17, 2020 planning board meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Tina, did you have anything you wanted to make sure that people knew, that changes were made, or anything outstanding?
Um, no, I sent out the revised copy today, and it just had a couple of spelling errors in it, and I spelled Ms. Vandenza's name incorrectly, but everything should be good now.
Okay. All right, with that, any further discussion? If not, Gina, go ahead and pull the board.
Mr. Mercicano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Timmy Bartow?
Yes.
Okay, next I have public comment. At this point, we'll open the meeting to comments from the public. Please note that we have three public hearings this evening for the Belmonte Site Plan Replantation Special Use Permit, the Rhodes Minor Subdivision, and the Rowland Street Major Subdivision. So if you have comments on those projects, please wait until we start the respective hearings, so your comments keep part of the record. Again, if you just have a general comment, I would ask that if you're Zooming with us and want to make your comment, please use the hand wave feature to submit via the Q and A button and alert us to your interest in commenting. If you have dialed in, please call Bill Lewis at 518-884-2764, or text him at 518-376-1831. Is there any comment from the public at this point? Mary Ann, I see you have your hand waved. I'll ask if you have any... If you have a comment, you can...
Um, this is for the Belmonte project?
Well, we're going to be opening that hearing in a minute. Do you want to wait until we open the hearing?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I don't see any other interested comment at this point, so I will close the public comment hearing. It's past 7:05, so we can continue. We will reopen a Belmonte public hearing on the special use permit and site plan this evening. We will continue the hearing. Last month, we had a few questions and comments regarding the site plan and the stormwater permit, which we did not have available to us for. So there now, I could read all 23 documents, but most recent documentation that had come in on this since our last meeting was correspondence dated 16/20 from our engineer Joel Giacchi regarding stormwater plan. We have several pieces of correspondence that were delivered to the town hall, items 19 on our webpage, that submitted written comments. They're there. We have a memorandum from attorney Michael Tuie dated 6/24/20. We have a transmittal memo from John Romeo dated 7/120, a revised Belmonte site plan dated 7/120, a stormwater pollution prevention report dated July 9/20. Mr. Bianchi, would you be willing to summarize your comments regarding the stormwater?
Sure. We issued our comment letter on July 14th. As you indicated, our focus was strictly on SWIP and the stormwater pollution prevention plan. We had seven comments. I would categorize them as strict and technical. I did forward these on to Mr. Romeo, who is their consultant. He is working diligently to address these comments. If the board was to entertain any action on this application this evening, these comments could be considered of minor nature, and would be addressed as a condition of any approval of the board as to entertain.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any additional comments for the board at this point?
Other than we did receive the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as Joel said, and all the items listed.
Okay, and on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Belmonte, Michael Tuie, or Mr. Bianchi, do you have a little presentation place to do?
Just very quickly, we thank the board for its patience over the course of these months. My memo was very direct. It explained how we got ourselves into this. And we really have no other choices but to do the special use permit for the building that we were constructing. I believe that the questions that the board had at its last meeting were, as the town's engineer indicated, primarily technical, and I think those have been addressed. So if there are any questions about the application, we would be more than glad to be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Tuie. This is John Romeo from Inside Northeast. As you noted, we did submit the SWIP and a new revised set of plans. With that set of plans, we do have stormwater measures shown on there. And again, we did include those additional plantings that the board had requested, that I had discussed at the last meeting, but we had not yet submitted that plant set. So with this plant set, we do have those new items shown. There are no other major changes aside from the addition of those plantings and the stormwater controls. Now, just for a brief description, the stormwater controls for the project site do include some stormwater tree plantings that have direct runoff, just a few of them that are directly adjacent to the pavement. We also have a vegetated swale that comes from our truck area all the way down to a stormwater pond. For water quality, we are including a bio retention area off of the parking lot, and that will overflow towards our large stormwater pond. All of the stormwater treatment is being managed on-site, and is she pouring after this to the existing drainage corner that is in that area. There's an existing drainage ditch that is there, and we're discharging our pipe to that area. Based on the analysis of the stormwater report that we did, the result of the stormwater pond actually shows a net decrease in both the 10 and 100-year storm events, as would be typical and required for near state disease. So we have a reduced amount of peak discharge from these, as a result of these stormwater and bio retention area ponds. Unfortunately, we were not able to incorporate any infiltration practices due to the depth of groundwater that we had noted during our prior testing. So everything in here is a traditional type system, with the addition of the bio retention area, which is placed partially in fill and has an underdrain. If anybody has any other technical questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the board have any questions at this point? We'll wait until we hear some public comments. Okay, with that, I will reopen the public hearing for the Belmonte Special Use Permit. The record showed that we started at 7:14 PM. Again, I'd ask anybody who'd like to address the board, either use the Zoom waiting Q and A function, call the planning office at 518-884-2764, or text Bill Lewis at 518-376-1831. With that, I'm not seeing any Q and As. And I will check... Mary Ann Butler, you can unmute if you can speak your own language.
Okay, it's Mary Ann Becker?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. It's 3655 Galway Road. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay. It was funny you should mention the stormwater, because I was thinking about the ditch in front of our house, which goes all the way down Galway Road, and it flows like crazy when there's a storm, all the way down Galway Road, and it floods one of our fields, and it floods one of our neighbor's fields. So we really do have a lot of water going down in the ditch on Galway. But that's neither here nor there. I wanted to just present that fact. We don't really know how to proceed with this process. The neighbors have presented at least three written letters, and many have spoken at the planning board meetings, and they're thankful that you were allowed us to speak and present some of our concerns. However, we feel that our concerns and our objections have never been discussed at a board meeting. The neighbors don't understand why the board thinks the commercial business is the same as an agricultural business. We don't understand why the board thinks allowing a commercial business in a R2 agricultural district will set a precedent for others. We don't understand why you don't think there is any impact on the agricultural neighborhood. And, but we would like to, if this goes through, we just want you to know that we would like our objections and our concerns addressed, and also if this does finally go through, we would like you to put some restrictions on the business, if allowed. As far as hours of operation, a regular workday, eight or nine till five. No further structures being built for the business. No other business than the tent rentals allowed. No subdivision of the parcel with the business on it. And we feel that because this is so out of character and it never been permitted before, that we feel the planning board should at least assure that the restrictions are being met. So we would like a review in a year. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else just out too? No, Mary Ann is out. I have no other hands raised. Is there anyone that wants to bring up any additional comment before the board? Mr. Lewis, have you gotten a call or anything from anyone?
Nothing at this time, Chairman Bartow.
Does the board have any questions at this point or comments? Look, I can't, I can hear somebody, but not very loud.
I'm sorry, I just want to communicate now.
Yes.
Um, Nancy Schultz is raising her hand.
Nancy Schultz is raising her hand. Okay. Nancy, can I mute? Oops. Nancy, are you able to unmute? Nancy, we can't seem to hear you.
Yeah, um...
Oh, there you go. I think that's you.
Can I mute now?
Yes, we can.
Wait, I'm going to get a little bit.
That's okay. Sorry, I know it's difficult.
So, I've spoken at these hearings before. I can hopefully add the concerns of the 11-plus neighbors that have either live across from, adjacent to, or their property abuts the domo property concerns are being concerned.
Nancy, can you hear me now?
When reading zoning rules, it's difficult to see how we got this far. Living in a neighborhood and have an idea for a business, would you not remove the zoning rules first, which clarify, clearly indicate that nothing is proposed that was in the zoning rules for this area? Allowing one family to move into the area and impact the lives of the 11 other neighbors who are already residing here seems unconfrontable, quite frankly disrespectful. Allowing the commercial business to operate at property will change the nature of this area forever and impact the neighbors and the community in a negative manner. Then what happens with the next boom, because it comes along with requests of areas for another commercial business? The precedent is set for the others to come to this area with their commercial business as well. Is this really fair to those who already live here and choose to live in an area with no commercial business? Those of you on the committee are not the neighbors that live within view of this property. You do not have to see the structures every day, the trucks, the commercial equipment store on the lot, the parking lot, the people where the commercial business would be, but we will. So hopefully our concerns are considered and addressed. A commercial business is not fit within the nature of this community, and the 11-plus neighbors who live across from, adjacent to, or their property abuts the domo property do not support, and we are hopeful that you will do the right thing and protect our rights to their area we choose to live free from commercial business activities. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else's hand at this point. Could I respond to that though? Uh, yes, if we'd like to respond to that, Mr. Tuie.
I understand, and I'll do it very, very quickly. Again, I believe the neighbors believe that the Belmontes just ignored the rules and regulations. I've demonstrated, I think quite convincingly, to the board that the Belmontes understood that there was a special use permit process in the town of Milton. They had that within their contract. They went to the building inspector, and the building inspector, who is the only person or one of the only people in the town who can direct behavior with regard to zones and districts and utilizations, very specifically told them that they did not need to have a special use permit. That's been demonstrated both by the documentation I supplied and Dave Carr, who has no part of this application. He was present when this conversation and these conversations took place. So from the neighbor's point of view, we are not ignoring this. We were told that we could do this, and if we had not been told we could do this, very likely we would not have bought this property and spent the money that we have spent. What we are trying to do, and we are more than willing to attempt to mitigate it in any way that we could possibly do that, the utilization of this structure for the commercial purpose. The idea that this is a precedent is not correct. Admittedly, this will be a home occupation two, which there may not be any within this area of the town, but the basis by which it became a home occupation two is by the direction of the town itself. And as a result, unless the town does this again, there is no precedent that has been set with regard to this particular property. Thank you.
I have a Q and A.
Morgan Jackson, can I see her raised?
Okay, let me get to that.
John, you actually already unmuted me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. I don't know if this is for Mr. Tuie or Mr. Tenny, but legally speaking, if the application is in place that sort of is not aligned with the town code when it comes to the amount of employees associated with the business that are outside the residence, is that setting precedence to the point where Mr. Tuie can come back and say, a year later, there can be 20 employees at the business because the town agreed, as it was already admitted at the last hearing, that there would be more than two non-residential employees at the business?
I must admit, I'm not sure I entirely understand the question, but I will try to answer it. Under the relevant sections of the town code, this application is a home occupation class two, and it then fits within the home occupation supplemental reg section. Now, with respect to the particular relief that's been requested, Mr. Jackson, it's in the nature of a special use permit. This board has the ability, not only to follow the rules that are stated in those sections as they relate to home occupations, but also generally to impose reasonable conditions as it relates to the use of the property that's proposed. So with respect to the scenario that you suggest, and that is the idea that if the application, and I emphasize that, if the application were to be approved in a manner consistent with those sections, that is the definition of home occupation two, and then the supplemental regulations that relate to home occupations, the approval would also be subject to any other reasonable conditions that the board imposed, and that would not give the applicant the right, assuming that there was a limitation stated with respect to the number of people who could work at the premises, would not give the applicant the right to come back a year later with 20 people working there.
Perfect. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I just want to make sure there was no sort of loopholes in here that would allow them to do that.
Just to add on a couple of the comments I wanted to mention too. First one, which specific to the number of employees. The board really can't regulate the number of employees that they have business with. But what we can, what our code says we can do, is we cannot put a condition that would not allow any more than two non-resident employees at any one time to conduct the property. Again, if 20 people working in a venue off-site, we don't have any ability to regulate any of that.
Absolutely, and I don't really care about that. It's more about the amount of people on-site at the residence.
And I think they've at least presented to us that there would not be any more than residents or two non-resident employees on the site at any one time. At least that's what they've indicated to us, and that is a matter of enforcement. Now, with respect to the home occupation two years, there's nothing in the code that says it has to be an agricultural, maybe, business enterprise. It can be any eligible home occupation. That's a very broad term, and so we're limited. You know, we can't say, no, it has to be agricultural. The last thing I wanted to address was the building itself, as we've identified many times. The pole barn, albeit even a heated, rather nice and elaborate pole barn, meets the bulk and areas requirements of our zoning, so they could have put that barn up with as little as a building permit. It's only the use that they've come to us for, and that's to now have this tent directly with this building. So the only thing before us is that in terms of scope, is that we don't get to regulate beyond what the zoning code would allow, as appropriate accessory pole barn, which I think Mr. Lewis made that very clear, that it meets the area of all regulations on it. In terms of some of the conditions that, Ms. Becker out tonight, we cannot prohibit the subdivision of this property in the future. We certainly couldn't, it's a lot of large enough size that pieces of it could be subdivided off, whether or not it's a barn, whatever. That's just not before us. Our zoning allows subdivisions if you meet certain requirements. This is a pretty big, large lot, so we can't put a condition that says you'll never be able to subdivide this area. They cannot subdivide the use off again at legitimate. They'd have to come in for an appropriate use that's on there. And they can't have an accessory home occupation two in a separate subdivided off lot. So it would be very difficult for that to subdivide off the apartment business in the future. But that's something that they have the right to come to the town and request an application for, and they certainly have other problems that they would want to figure out. We can't deal with some of the hours of operation. We can't deal with what other structures, although the home occupation two can use some of the other existing structures that are on the building. If they were going to come in and do another... If they were going to come in and do another structure, they'd have to come through us. One of the things the zoning says is they're limited to two home occupations on the property if we want, um, if they chose to have another home occupation, they'd have to come in and attempt to be tested and play on. So I hope that gets to some of those questions.
John, we do have a question, are you also under restriction on the number of commercial vehicles for this?
That's, that's an oper- that is plausible. Did that person want to make a comment?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Yes, I mean, we, we have, we have a wide latitude of restrictions that we propose. Mr. Lewis, have you gotten any texts or phone calls?
I have not at this time.
Okay, I'll take one last look to see, I don't see any Q and A, I don't see any additional hands raised.
You want to raise their hands before I split them?
I don't know, I'll ask Mary Ann to unmute. Your hand is still raised, did you have another comment in your head?
No, I did not, I, I don't know why, I'm stoned.
No, that's okay, your hand just is there.
Okay, I don't know why, I didn't.
Okay. Are there public comments? Jim, are you saying you have motion to close? You're Marcy Carter.
Can you repeat it? I didn't hear half of it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear either.
I, I'm asking if anyone would like to propose a motion to close the public hearing for the Belmonte special use permit.
Uh, pause that motion. Pause that motion, I may have a second.
Any discussion? No discussion till the board?
Mr. Marcy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Peddula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van, Van Denza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. Does the board have any questions or discussion before we go ahead and consider the applications for a site plan, a special use permit for a home occupation two in association with a tent rental business within the Belmonte's accessory pole barn? Can I ask a question? Thank you.
Uh, again, tell us how many vehicles you said would be on-site, since it's somebody's question. Mr. Tewey? You're still muted.
I will ask, uh, Ms. Belmonte if you can give you that answer. Terry, do you not unmute your Zoom call?
There you go.
There we now?
Yep.
Okay, we have three registered vehicles. And in the foreseeable future, that's all I see.
Thank you.
Any other board have a question at this point?
Um, I had a question.
Okay, answer it.
Um, I was just wondering if you could talk about what the hours of operation you're thinking are for the business.
It's eight to five, and in the winter, it's less, it's pretty much.
And that includes?
Nine to, nine to four, you know, if somebody's answering the phones.
And that would include like the trucks being loaded, unloaded, that kind of thing, or?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so just to sum that up, um, you said you had, uh, three trucks. Can, can you give an idea of, are they forty-foot trucks or twenty-foot trucks or some number in between, or?
Um, it's a, one is a box truck, and I would say, how, how big is that, Joe?
Sixteen.
Sixteen foot.
The ramp truck's eighteen.
Oh, the ramp truck is eighteen foot.
And, uh, no, one second, twenty-two.
And our biggest one is twenty-two feet. Also a box truck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you just clarify those times I hired two different?
Eight, eight to five, um, in the summer months, and, I mean, that's just somebody in there answering the phones. The trucks, you know, are probably done by two, three o'clock, which we have mentioned. In the winter, we really don't have anything going out, so it would just be the employees here, and then we shorten our hours to, um, nine to four.
Restaurant, restaurant, hotel.
Yeah, well, I mean, we might have deliveries to a, a hotel or a restaurant for dishes or whatever, but in the winter, there's pretty much nothing going on.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure, but answer it, you all, as far as you want.
All right, um, I just had a question about, uh, on, on the site plan, it shows a kitchen, and I think last time you said it's not a kitchen. I just wanted to know, is, uh, is that?
Not a kitchen, it has a sink, and we wash our dishes there. Um, so it just has a commercial dishwasher, and all of our plates, dishes, forks, anything that you can imagine. Chaping dishes, stuff like that, we just wash them there.
So there's no food, bread?
No, 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 nothing like that, no.
Nothing?
No.
Back on the trucks, I just want to ask a quick question. There's been some comments from the public, so I just wanted to understand, as far as the parking of the trucks and where they're going to be overnight, what, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard was that, that the trucks are stored behind the building, um, towards the north, north side of the building, um, in the back loading area, um, is, is that a, a condition that we would be, uh, willing to, uh, live with, that, uh, that that's where the trucks stay at night?
And it's right on the north side of the building?
Yep. In that area behind, we have the three bays and, you know, so forth, that's what I was talking about, just, uh, just to be clear.
All right.
Okay. Any other board questions at this point? Okay, then what I'd like to do, um, is to, uh, ask, ask for a motion, uh, to approve the Belmonte site plan. This, we're going to break this out to section of the site plan and of the special use permit. So the first motion I'd like to entertain is a motion to consider approval of the Belmonte site plan, which is dated, John, just I have it down here.
Seven one, seven one, two thousand twenty.
Yep. Do I have such a motion?
Chairman, I'd make the motion to accept the site plan as presented. Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make that motion, but I'd like to put a condition on it.
Sure, can, can we just get the motion and then discuss the condition, or do you want to do?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh...
Yeah, what's your condition?
The condition was satisfaction of the, and the town engineer's, uh, seven comments, uh, per their letter, uh, dated to the, to the applicant. If I heard that right, that's a condition that the, the town engineer wanted on the site plan, you'll have the stormwater and, uh, associated items that they're still dealing with that are technical, but, um, remain to be fully resolved. Um, did I say that incorrectly?
Nope, that's, that is, that is fine. So the motion would be to cons- to be, to approve the site plan with the condition of satisfying the engineer's comments on the stormwater, the engineer's comments on his letter dated, that was Joel, what's the date of the memo there?
It's the fourteenth.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's fourteen.
Number fourteen, twenty, okay? That's, that'll be the condition. Do I have a second? That going to be used, John?
I'll second it.
Okay. Pull the board.
Mr. Marcy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Peddula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Denza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. Okay, now regarding the special use permit, I'd like to present some findings and conditions of the board, uh, for consideration and discussion. I shared this with the board members earlier today, but, um, this would be a bit long. Uh, the first is some of the conditions that we've met, uh, regarding first, public health and safety, then general welfare, uh, will not be adversely affected by the project so long as the findings and conditions approvals are properly complied with by the applicant. Periodic review for purposes of renewal of the special use permit is conducted in accordance with section one eighty-fourty-six of the county town code. Um, traffic and safety in the area would maintain as traffic will be limited to the resident employees of the home occupation two, and no more than two non-resident employees at any one time, uh, and periodic client visits in order to review and rent it, rented items. Current traffic conditions will be maintained so long as the conditions of approvals are strictly adhered to, periodic renewal of permits conducted. Uh, limited specific goods and services provided by the applicant and its operations will serve and benefit the attendance functions throughout Zerrebilly County. The entirety of the services provided, provided off premises, which are not subject to the application, and the events venues owned by third parties. The improvements are located on a parcel of land where the proprietors of the business occupy themselves and reside. The applicant represented that at present time, two generations of family members who work at the business reside in the property, the family also maintains livestock on the property. The applicant was committed to enhancing aesthetics associated with the new single-story pole barn structure driveway, onsite water and wastewater system. Improvements will remain harmonious with conditions of the site. The landscaping plan sheet one forty submitted by the applicant shall include those evergreen plantings along Boston Galway Road, the northwest corner of the pole barn, parking area to screen the vehicles along the eastern side of the pole barn, parking area screened properties to the east. This is predominantly rural, and expanses of mature vegetation and trees will provide natural screening of structures for most of the planned site. Any storage associated with construction of the site shall be removed within thirty days of receiving a certificate of occupancy by the building code office in the town of Milton that includes storage trailers placed beyond site, where the terms of this resolution are consistent with the environmental assessment forms of the controlling. Operations, the site is appropriately sized for proposed operations, which is a storage of goods associated with a tent rental business in support of off-site events. Uh, the lot size is approximately eighteen point two-two acres of land, where operations will be predominantly confined to a limited area immediately adjacent to the Boston Galway Road. The applicant is committed to refrain from affirmatively representing the general public that the premises contain a business operation. The only signage presently intended in this, uh, area is a four-foot square sign, which has not been applied for at this point, uh, and there will be no variance sought for any sign of, of a different character. The applicant has also represented that various limited businesses shall be conducted on the site between the hours of eight AM and five PM. Sidewalks, there's no sidewalks required in this portion of the district. Buildings and improvements, uh, will not discourage development. The size of the new building itself is subject to much attention. The planning board has noted that the size of the building alone is not determinative in this case, as the building itself is permitted as a right under the code. Here, the board's review is focused on the nature of the specific needs proposed for the building, and for the reasons stated by the board finds that in terms of the pole barn, is it permitted accessory structure under the R2 zoning bulk and area recommendations. With respect to storage, propane tanks will be stored outside the northwest corner of the pole barn, parking area will be appropriately screened. Traffic is, uh, represented, be very light, the representative, representative has stated that ninety percent of the customers interact with the applicant by way of the internet, and the applicant and staff will travel from the premises to the sites on the beds and galways. Further represented, only two people, two to three people will come to the site each week. A Canadian truck will come to the site one or two times per week. The north side of the building will accommodate truck traffic associated with the use. All other vehi- vehicles will be confined to the south. Um, the north side of the building will have parking for three business truck vehicles associated with the use. No, no vehicles will be stored in the building. Uh, the landscaping plan has been outlined in drawing C four, one forty of the site plan. Sounds of lighting, the planning board considered lighting. The applicant's representative stated that a single blue step light which will be utilized on the north side, uh, door to the building, allowing safe ingress and ingress. There will be a single ban-down lit and motion-activating, uh, lighting that is present. Uh, the applicant has agreed that the aesthetics of the building will be and remain the nature of a pole barn. Uh, best management practice of the, the project will not adversely impact the natural features of the property, and the applicant has represented the engineer's stormwater motion patrol plan pursuant to New York State regulations. Um, the planning board did consider the home occupation two standards that are already provided in section one eighty-five or one eighty-three-one of home occupations. Specifically, the planning board has determined that the proposed use of the pole barn for operating the Belmonte and Sons tent and events, tent rental and catering, supply business carried out on, permitted in the pole barn. The tent rental business will be conducted on a property owned by Terry Joseph Belmonte, and it places one son or one daughter reside on the property in the principal residential structure, the home occupation two Belmonte and Sons tent and events. Business is clearly incidental to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes, does not change the character thereof, which will be fully consistent with the form and state, standard state, the home occupation, section one eighty-three-one. Section one eighty-three-one of home occupations, the planning board makes the following findings for the use of the pole barn to house a home occupation class two business operated by the Belmonte family, known as the Belmonte and Sons tents and events, for the purpose of indoor storage and display of tents and various catering sundries we transported moved off premises. The Belmonte Sun Tents and Events Home Occupation Two is presented wholly operated within the pole barn, with the exception of outdoor probate storage and no more than three vehicles in the north parking lot. The storage of tents and catering sundries within the permitted accessory pole barn is compatible with other uses allowed in the district schedule of use resident regulations as noted below. Belmonte Sun Tent and Events Home Occupation Class Two is incidental, secondary and subordinate to the Belmonte residential occupants involved on the property. Belmonte and Sons Tent and Event is represented to be conducted in the manors, does not give an outward appearance of a business, consistent with the character of the property, the residence and the barn's accessory to the residential use in the R2 district. The permitted home occupants, home occupation class two is presented in a manner so as not to infringe on the privacy of neighbors, the peaceful use enjoyed of the property. This is one of potentially two home occupations that may include Belmonte property. Belmonte Sun and Sons Tent and Event Storage Business is operated by Joseph Belmonte, Terry Belmonte, one son and one daughter residing on the property. Belmonte's have represented there's no, is another daughter and two drivers who also are employed in the Belmonte Sun and Tent Event Business. Have presented that no more than two non-residential employees be on the premises at any one time. There's adequate off street parking for any and all anticipated vehicles associated with the business and occasional. Customers' trucks shall not exceed three and parked on the north side of the park. Belmonte Sun and Tent Event Storage Business will not generate pedestrian traffic. The de minimis vehicle traffic of rental customers will have adequate screen parking not to finish the residential property. There is not a sign requested at this time, but a future sign may, shall not be illuminated and shall not exceed four square feet. Belmonte and Sons Tent Event Rental Storage Business is presented to be conducted only within the pole barn and the barn will not be altered on the exterior for the character of a barn accessory to appropriate use of the R two district. Proposed tent rental business will not generate a lot of truck tra- traffic that would exceed the volume of the traffic and otherwise would generated by a typical residential use of accessory barn storage facilities. The Belmonte and Sons Tent and Event Home Occupation Class Two is presented will not generate offensive noise, vibration, smoke, electrical interference, dust, motorsheep, or light. The Belmonte and Sons Tent and Event Home Occupation Class Two is presented will operate strictly between the hours of eight AM and five PM on, on a daily basis. Other than that, when it's presented for storage and display associated with the Belmonte and Sons Tent and Events equipment, vehicles, customer associated with tent and catering rental, rental business, no other products or services ever presented for use of the property. Other than that, which is presented, proposed for storage and use within the barn, propane storage outside the pole barn, parking in the northern and southern areas of the barn. There is no proposed or presented outdoor display of goods or accessory vehicles, equipment used in association, association with the Belmonte and Sons Tents and Events. There is not presented or proposed sharing, letting, or subletting space for use by others in the conduct of the profession trade or business. Planning board has determined that the pole barn to the, the house, to, the pole barn to house a home occupation class two operated by Belmonte and Sons, tents and events for the purpose of indoor storage and various catering sundries to be transported on or on premises permitted by a special use permit in town and mill district schedule of use regulations under section one forty. That's seven. Therefore, we have resolved that the application, applications are approved subject to the following conditions. In accord with amended landscaping offerings along the Boston Galway northwestern portion of the pole barn, screening, propane storage, parking areas along the eastern boundary, screening from the eastern neighboring properties, caliber and height species numbers as articulated. Amendment site plan, plan C, C one forty, mitigates the impacts associated with letting, uh, with, by users that by and by down-facing dark skies type related treatments. Allows no more than three business trucks and other business vehicles part of the north parking area other than four family members residing on the property. Allow no more than two additional employees on the premises at any one time. Hours of operation will be restricted from eight AM to five PM on a daily basis, except as expressly permitted herein and permanently refrain from conducting business in a manner so as to give the outward appearance of a business located on the premises. Except for the articles customarily associated with Belmonte and Sons Tent and Event Rental Business consisting of tents and associated catering sundries, no other stock and trade shall be displayed or operated on the premises without first obtaining the appropriate additional home occupation use permits. No outdoor display of goods or accessory vehicles, equipment used in association with Belmonte and Sons Tents and Events rentals shall be permitted on the premises except as encumbered in a special use permit. Such goods, materials, or equipment may be stored elsewhere on the premises if appropriately stored in an existing structure of the property. There shall be no sharing, letting, or subletting space that is used by others in the conduct of the profession trade or business. Remove all storage and construction equipment associated with construction of the pole barn and intended uses within thirty days of receiving a certificate of occupancy. Maintain continuing compliance with all laws, ordinance, rules, and regulations included in those sets for the section one eighty-three-one of the town code. And specifically, that the home occupation, which shall be conducted only by members of the family residing in a dwelling unit on the real property, then the more than two non-residential assistants interns or employees shall be permitted at any one time to work on the premises of the home occupation. Apply to periodically renew this special use permit upon renewal with section one eighty forty-six of the town code, honorable before the expiration of three years from the date of this resolution and on periodic intervals thereafter as determined by the planning board, mention each instance on the rule. Comply within accord with section one eighty fifty-four of the town code, all conditions, modifications incurred by the planning board action, applicant's simultaneous application for site plan approval. And finally, this too, um, require the engineer's sign-off on the stormwater pollution permission uh, as it's installed and the conditions he's outlined in his letter dated July fourteenth. Uh, this application for special use permit is hereby approved, subject to the findings and conditions stated and upon the applicant's compliance with the submission requirements and modifications. Uh, the final plat dated July, uh, first twenty twenty, situated on April four, July nine. Any questions, comments, or concerns on conditions filed existing?
Okay, I just have one there. I th- I think we should at least, uh, inquire about is, is whether there should be a limit on the size of the trucks, um, that are in. It seems as if a limit of twenty-two feet, um, could work. Um, uh, cause naturally you, you could have three trucks of, you know, fifty-four feet if you want, or sixty feet. Um, if we, if we left it the way we rode it. So, that would be something I'd, I'd like us to at least talk about or, or consider.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have some proposed?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking twenty-two feet, cause that's what they got now. Um, they have three trucks according to what I heard. And if it's a higher, um, let me know, sixteen feet, eighteen feet, and twenty-two feet. And if you look at the size in the background, um, for where it's screened, um, you know, it seems like a twenty-two foot truck would be hidden back there. But a larger truck might not be, and so if we wanted to go with larger trucks, uh, we might need, uh, more screening.
We don't need a bigger truck, but I would like to just actually measure it to make sure I'm giving you the, I, I, I'm guessing twenty-two feet. Whatever our biggest truck is, I could let you know for sure. But I'm guessing twenty-two feet, that's our bigger one, and I, we wouldn't use anything bigger than that because you can't get around town, you need a special license to drive it, you know, like.
Yeah, better way to classify this kind of vehicle, Joe, is it, is it, um, oh, I guess, it's certainly not a tractor trailer.
Would there be a way to stay limited to a CDL class B trucker?
If that means something official.
Since I'm not an expert on, on what that classification is, I, I, I just don't know the answer to that.
CDL class B truck would be over eighteen thousand pounds, but not a tractor trailer. So, basically for all intents and purposes, it will limit it to the type of trucks they're describing?
That's correct, that's the type of truck it is.
We like a specific foot measure, measurements and square footage of the box and carrying capacity, but that would be a CDL classification that considers what I would call a straight truck, which is not a tractor trailer.
Right, right.
If, if that's what the regulation is, I, I, I just don't have it. I just didn't want to see a bunch of track, trailer, dump. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it that flippantly, um, you know, the three are, so, track trailers back there. Yeah, cause I, I hope their business, I hope their business is able to be very successful, right? So, um, naturally, as you get more successful, you get more business.
No, we've been in the business a long time, this is about as big as our success is, and especially with this virus and small gatherings, we might be out of business. So, yeah, I would be okay with that classification, whatever that truck is, we're not going any bigger than that.
I'm just looking online and I believe the biggest truck for a, not like a biggest box truck is about twenty-six feet long, um, operated with a non-CDL license. That'd be like a commercial U-Haul rental. That's the biggest truck that they, that they allow under that twenty-six thousand pound limit.
If you want to take a vehicle not to exceed, it's, you know, a single box truck not to exceed twenty-six feet. Cause I think the CDL class B, I was just looking that up and it's really talking about vehicles up to twenty-six, over twenty-six thousand pounds.
That's, that, I was confused about calling it a CDL, cause on those other trucks, you don't need a CDL for.
On our small box truck and the rack truck, you don't, but on that, what I'm calling the twenty-two foot box, yeah, you, you do need a CDL for that one.
I do, okay.
The, the principle behind my comment was that would put a cap on, and it basically gives a category of the vehicle. The, the weight and the size don't necessarily fall in conjunction with one another, but I agree that you could go to a rider or any rental place and rent a twenty-six foot box truck without a CDL license. But having said that, that, that cap size, if you, in, in the spirit of some kind of regulatory statement, would cap it at that size of vehicle.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
That's, that's my only thought, because you could measure every truck eight ways from Sunday, but it, it kind of gives it a category of vehicle. I would suspect that would be the spirit of my comment.
I'm willing to go with Pat's comment, I'm just not an expert in the area, but, um, if that prevents it, um, the class B not to include a, a semi-tractor trailer, you know, something like that. So, you don't have a tractor and a trailer.
I, I would just offer one comment, and it's perhaps more as a matter of certainty. And I'm thinking about everyone in this context of the board, the town, residents, and certainly, uh, the Belmontes and their operation. Um, to the extent the board can determine this in a manner that provides some certainty, if we can do it with linear feet, I think that's Mr. Whittle's thought, is we're talking about length. Um, that may benefit everyone in the future so that, uh, as we all know, government can change the rules with respect to, as Pat mentions, the CDL classifications. Um, so that might, thought is if, if we could do it with a matter of feet, and that meets to Mr. Whittle's, uh, thinking, that might be advisable.
I appreciate that, cause I was trying to make sure that it would be essentially hidden behind the building and not stick out. And so I was kind of rough estimating, you know, that a, a truck of that size, according to the, the site layout I have, would, you know, it wouldn't really, um, be seen, cause it, it'd be behind the propane structure and, um, it'd be behind the building, and there's an extremely tight angle to see behind the building. To where you could see trucks back there, but if they were much larger, they'd naturally be easy to see. So, that's why I went with the foot, trying to stay away from the, the classes of licenses.
It, it might perhaps be as simple as, um, restricting the use of specifically tractor trailers. Uh, now that raises an issue, as we all know, there can be differing lengths. Uh, but I think in part, uh, both the applicant and the board is inclined toward restricting against the use of tractor trailers. And it would be a question of whether or not Mr. and Mrs. Belmonte felt comfortable. I recognize what Mrs. Belmonte said, that twenty-two feet was an estimate. Um, would she feel comfortable, uh, with, as Mr. Romeo suggests, utilizing twenty-six feet? Uh, recognizing that the intent is to allow the use of the largest truck at this time?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm sorry, somebody said something, but I didn't quite hear what they said. I think they said I don't have something larger than that, but, uh, maybe I didn't hear it right.
Yeah, that was my husband, Joe, he's, um, FaceTiming, he's out of the area right now. He said he doesn't have any, he wouldn't get anything larger than that, so we're okay with the twenty-six feet, I'm sure. I just didn't want to see you say twenty-two feet and then my truck is twenty-three feet right off the gate, oh, I'm not compliant.
Yeah, no, it's not, that wasn't my intent to put a truck in this.
I, but I just didn't, I just wanted out of the record that I was guesstimating the twenty-two feet. But I'm okay with, with the twenty-six feet.
Okay, what if we were to say to allow no more than three business trucks not to exceed a length of twenty-six feet?
I'm fine with that, and other board members are, you know, welcome to chime in.
Any comments on the findings or conditions?
If that satisfies that.
There was a comment about the, the truck, what they, everything.
Okay, let me get back to this little thing, I was looking up. Question.
You answered it, John, I was exactly in line with what I was thinking yourself, you're good?
Okay.
No tractor trailers?
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the findings? Okay, can I entertain a motion to consider approval of this special, sorry, I heard this. Special use permit for a home occupation two for a tent rental business within the Belmonte accessory pole barn, subject to the findings and conditions presented in the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll start, I checked that.
I can, okay. Can it be on board?
Mr. Prescott?
I'm gonna say no, uh, some explanation. Uh, the proposed business will require access and overnight parking for three delivery trucks and access for a laundry truck. I believe that that truck traffic will detract from the character and dignity of the area and will give the outward appearance of the business. And also, the proposed business will make use of a previously permitted storage barn. Bathrooms and commercial dishwashing facilities are required to support the business, and I believe those facilities are not consistent with the permissions. Thank you.
Ms. Dula?
I'm moving yes, I think based on the conditions that we are putting forth with our, uh, the resolution, I think that they will meet the qualifications for this type of application, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Ms. Van Dammeza, uh, I'm sorry, Ms., Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Dammeza?
Yes, um, again, uh, just to reiterate, but, um, there's inside these conditions. We've addressed some of the concerns that had over the past few months, thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Also, oh, yes, because I think the conditions we put on it and the fact that it will be reviewed in three years, um, negate some of my concerns also.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes, um, I, um, I do, yes, um... Yes, um, I, um, I do, yes, um, I respect that there's, that there's differences in the perspectives on the impact of this, uh, particular accessory use, home occupation two. And that, um, it, it's impact on the harmony of the area and the neighborhood. Uh, I believe though that the article allows home occupation twos, and it requires the applicant to make, uh, certain, certain mitigating actions. And I think that the Belmontes have, have attempted to, uh, make those, uh, mitigating actions and have, uh, put forth a project that, that attempts to do that. I like that we have a sunset provision in it of a three-year timeframe, um, in order to see how the business progresses, so it gives us another opportunity. Um, so, I would go yes.
Hey, Chairman Bartow?
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess I, my vote would be yes, uh, but I want to clarify that this is being granted, uh, for a specific use. It's not a blanket home occupation two. Specific and enumerated use of a tent rental catering rental equipment rental business. Um, so, you know, and we've heard allegations or suggestions in the past that a buyer, home occupation two, existed here. I don't have, we don't have any record of that, we don't have any permit on that, um, but the permit condition here clearly is that it is specifically for a tent rental catering equipment rental business. If the structure or property is to be used for any other use, this permit does not go with it, and you'd have to come back for a different, uh, special use permit. Extremely tailored. I'm at it. Thank you everyone for, uh...
Thank you very much.
We'll have, uh, copies of this approval, Mr. Thierry and Bill. We'll get the latest by closing this Friday.
Thank you. And I'm trying to keep moving along here, it is eight twelve. Uh, we're going to open the public hearing of the Rhodes Family Minor Subdivision. Uh, we last reviewed this project in October of two thousand nineteen. We're about to go to the public hearing with Mr. Gennett on behalf of the applicant, due to the application scheduled for the hearing, to work on some additional matters the board had discussed with the applicant. Uh, in October two thousand nineteen, we declared the Town Planning Board lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, completed the environmental assessment, and concluded that the proposed approval of a minor subdivision would not result in any significant environmental impacts. Uh, the board has before it fourteen documents, I won't read them all, but I will go to the most recent ones that have been added since we last looked at this. Item twelve corresponds from Mr. Gennett dated five twenty-seven twenty, submitting a revised minor subdivision for two lots. Uh, revised subdivision application dated five twenty-seven twenty, and revised subdivision plot forty-six dash four-one-four A dated May twenty-seventh, uh, twenty-twenty, reflecting two lot subdivision consisting of lots one and one each. I think I got this correct, this one. And a second, uh, lot number two. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Gennett to explain to us why the second and a half two lot is not a three lot subdivision. But first, Bill, please, comments on this. Zoe, there? I'm gonna get your stuff.
Not at this time, Chairman, I, uh, like you said, we, uh, went over at the last meeting, I have nothing I didn't have.
And Mr. Gennett, I think you'll be representing the applicants, I think?
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead, if you have a short presentation, can you please, uh, the number of lots?
Yes, uh, the, uh, the number of lots, Sean, uh, we, we still have two lots, lot one and lot two. Uh, lot one, who used to be lot one west, is no longer part of this, uh, application. And because the town, uh, so many common articles to, uh, section one fifty-four three already has deemed that lot on the west side of the transmission line to be submarine. So, so we, what we did is, is, is a result of, uh, your insight with regards to access, which I think was a, a good move on, uh, on the part of everyone, because it's given us a better project here with direct access along Lewis Road, uh, rather than crossing a, a power line. Uh, so, anyway, right now, what we have is a lot one, which is east of the power line, north of the Luigi Creek, is thirteen point seven-two-one acres. Uh, and the remaining lands, which are south of the Luigi Creek, with access to county road forty-five, uh, has twenty-seven point one-eight-eight acres, totaling forty point nine-nine oh nine acres, uh, total, uh, for the entire two lots.
Okay. Um, with that, uh, we will open the public hearing for the Rhodes Family Minor Subdivision. Let the record show, the hearing commenced at eight sixteen. Can I ask if anyone would like to address the board, if you could use the Zoom wave or Q and A function? Call the Town Planning Office at five one eight eighty-four two six seven four, or text Bill Lewis five one eight three seven six eighteen three one.
Mr. Chairman, that's five one eight eighty-four two seven six four, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have dyslexia, I'm playing in there. Okay, any comments? I don't, didn't Q and A, and I don't see any hands raised here. Any last chance for? Comments? Okay, there being no, uh, public comment, uh, do I have a motion to close the Rhodes Family Subdivision public hearing?
Chairman, I make my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Chairman Whittle? Can I vote for it? Do you need me to?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, John Whittle.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mercado?
Yes.
Ms. Pedulla?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bandita?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes.
Okay, does the board have any final comments or questions before we consider a decision on the Rhodes Minor Subdivision? I just want to comment that I appreciate the efforts that the family and Gennett did in getting that lot one west, or however we refer to it, uh, access. I think that makes, that makes it a more viable project. For the applicant, it makes a better project for the town and the neighbors, so I appreciate that. Sorry, took some extra time just doing it, but taking a long, long, long tour. Uh, I'll consider a motion to approve two lot minor subdivisions, uh, plot forty-six four-one-four A dated May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Um, I'll make that motion.
I have a second. Any discussion questions? There may not be a vote for it.
Mr. Mercado?
Yes.
Ms. Pedulla?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bandita?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes.
Does anybody want to take a five-minute break to stretch? Get up, or you want to just keep plowing through? No desire to break?
Wow.
Everybody ready? Okay, so, uh, this evening, we will, uh, consider a public hearing for the Rowland Street Major Subdivision. Uh, we're gonna continue the review on that. We have now, we're upwards to thirty-three documents in here, and I want to try to highlight a few of these, uh, that have been since our last, uh, our last meeting. Um, we have a draft, uh, final environmental assessment form part two, identification potential impacts, dated seven fifteen twenty. We have a draft final environmental assessment form part three, evaluation of the magnitude and importance of project impacts, determination of significance, dated seven fifteen twenty. We have, uh, draft secret notice, uh, determination dated seven fifteen twenty, notice of determination. Email from the Renet, Nat, dated seven thirteen twenty, commenting on the project. We have the waiver resol- resolution dated June seventeenth, twenty-twenty, uh, where we waived the twenty lot, uh, lot requirement for not connecting roads. We have a letter from the State Historic Preservation Officer dated July thirteenth, twenty-twenty, noting no adverse impacts on historical or geological sites, with a couple of caveats. Uh, we have the revised final environmental assessment form part one, uh, revised on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty. And we have a revised final environmental assessment for negative declaration in seven fifteen twenty. Uh, Mr. Lewis, do you have any comments on the project at this point?
At, at this point, I do not, other than the, uh, the water issue, um, with the, with the town, the town side, but, uh, at the town board level. Um, that's the only thing that I'm aware of that is still, uh, kind of outstanding, and we really don't have an answer on this yet.
Okay, yes, we are still awaiting your final letter to come from the town board, so we're gonna do. Mr. Bianchi?
Yes, um, just to give you some, little bit more depth to what you were talking about. So, Jase has been reviewing his application from he's since two thousand fourteen, but the application has had more life in the last year, issued a couple of reviews, uh, from our last review we issued. Was last week, basically saying that we had no further technical comments, and that we had suggested some, some conditions relative to, um, further action, should the board entertain the actions this evening. Uh, just to give a little bit more depth to the waiver that was granted at the last meeting, um, in case the public wants to, or has concerns about it. Uh, the waiver was granted based primarily on the fact that the town wants to rely on the International Fire Code, which dictates the number of homes on a single point of access. Um, the town's regulations has a cap at twenty, whereas the International Fire Code has thirty, and then beyond thirty, there's forms of litigation that are allowed, uh, by the state of New York. It basically takes that regulation out of the town's hands, relies on state regulations, which are very clear on, it has forms of litigation, i.e. automatic speculators and single-family homes, and it's used to go beyond that. So, the highway department is in agreement with that. Long term, the town will likely be admitting their code to reconcile itself with the International Fire Code. Uh, regarding seeker, we did draft a part three findings for the board's consideration this evening. The findings do support a negative declaration. Uh, we eva- we evaluated every aspect of the project, from open space, traffic, threatened dangerous species, cultural resources, but that's been assumed for, for their, uh, review and consideration. Uh, the only item that has sort of changed since we issued our review was a land like New York's, after the new Lansing Engineering, um, submitted a proposal regarding, um, offering potential, um, open space or lands in lower parklands. Uh, we have commented on that all along through the project. Now, regarding this specific proposal, I need for the applicant to propose something which is either payment in lieu of offering lands. We did not comment on it this time because we had recalled, the board made recall this better. I believe this was discussed at the last board meeting in June, and I recall that there was, um, brief discussion saying that the town had no interest taking land, effectively taking it on tax rolls, or there may be no desire to take land, uh, for any purposes at this point. By review, in the very quick time, or the very short period of time that we had, um, there are some unusual circumstances being, that would come with that, that open space if the town was to entertain it. First, the town board has to agree to it. Second, it's, it's zoned commercially, uh, which would be an unusual circumstance to offer open space in a commercial zoning district. Um, third, it's landlocked. Fourth, it has severely constrained land, so when you bundle all those together, I don't know if offering that, that parcel or that property really meets the intent of parkland under the town's subdivision regulations. So I think that is a topic for discussion for the board this evening, because that is a change in the application for which this board has been reviewing, and for which we have issued a draft, draft secret findings and issued recommendations, should the board, uh, offer a pool of this. That's it, John, sorry for the while.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Come up with that. Right, now, before we can go to the hearing, we need to do our secret, uh, determinations here. So in January, we determined that this, uh, project was a type-one action member speaker. We directed our engineer to communicate with all the involved agencies, expressing Milton's, uh, the planning board's interest in being lead agency. We've completed our request for a coordinated review at this stage, and we have been proceeding as lead agency designated for this project. Uh, I'm going to now read the eighteen questions, part two, identification of potential impacts on this project. It's gonna take a little bit of time. I'm gonna go and do a little bit of depth on, on the areas where there may be, uh, some impact is indicated here. Uh, and this has been a, a, a full environmental assessment form work to be part of my book, the applicant, so let me go through this. Question number one, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on a physical alteration of land surface for the proposed site. Um, yes, there will be impacts, and we determined that the impacts will be small and mitigated, in terms of the action may involve construction on land where the depth to the water table is less than three feet. Yes, the proposed action may involve construction of the top speed to fifty percent. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed. Uh, proposed action may involve excavation of more than one thousand tons of natural material. Uh, proposed action may involve constru- construction that continues for more than one year or multiple phases. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, physical disturbance, uh, vegetative removal. Proposed action is or may be located close to the erosion area, which is, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's. Impacts on logic features. Proposed action may result in modification, destruction, or pivot access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Answer to that question is no. Three, impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect water or wetlands or other surface water bodies. Question on that is yes, although they've all been, uh, indicated as small impact or mitigated or not. Uh, mostly I want to point out that, uh, action may result in construction within or adjoining a freshwater wetland, or tributary, which it has, that can create turbidity in a water body from erosion, which is possible. Proposed action, uh, may include construction of water or oil wells, uh, stormwater discharge, which is true. That's it for there. Questions on impacts on surface water? Question four, impact on groundwater? The answer is yes. That's mostly that, uh, that potential development or depths of groundwater could be less than three feet, and, um, stormwater discharge is that may be. Any questions on impact on groundwater? Impact on flooding, there is none. Impact on air, there is none. Impact to set, impact on plants and animals, yes. Uh, mostly that there has been, uh, the identification of some habitat that potentially been used by a species of concern or conservation need that's been addressed. a species of concern or conservation need that's been addressed in, uh, deep sea correspondence, that, uh, impacts on agricultural resources, there is none. Question nine, impact on aesthetic resources, there is none. Question ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources, yes, although they're smaller minor. We've got that correspondence from the state historic preservation office. Um, there are some concerns, uh, that the applicant needs to follow up with, but, uh, other than that, they don't anticipate any adverse impact. Eleven, impact on open space and recreation, no. Twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, no, there's no presence. Thirteen, impact on transportation, no. Fourteen, impact on energy, uh, no. Impact on noise, odor, and light, there is yes. Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties, this is strong, but minor, um, mitigating action. I think proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow, but not necessarily lighting the existing area around it. Impact on human health, question sixteen, none. Question seventeen, consistency with community plans, the answer is no, it is. Eighteen, consistency with community character, the answer is no. Any questions on the environmental assessment? So, uh, we'll be, uh, having noted that in the review of the full environmental assessment form, there were six questions with potential impacts. If further review, the impacts were found to be small, mitigated in the project. I will now entertain a motion that the Roundland Street subdivision will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, therefore environmental impacts. It now be prepared and accordingly a negative declaration. We issued, and our engineers authorized the file on behalf of the town of the planning board as the agency, a negative declaration and notice of determination of non-significance. Um, on the determination of non-significance, or determination of significance. Some reason supporting that is that, um, those that we found mitigated thoroughly throughout the project, and that this would require myself and that Joel, engineer, to file that with it. Joel has given a list of, uh, supporting impacts that are summarized in my summary there. That will be, uh, filed along with the notice of determination of non-significance. If everybody have any questions on those particular proposals on that? Do I have a motion for a negative declaration?
Mr. Chairman, I'll subdue the motion for a negative declaration on the Roundland Street project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
You told the board to.
Mr. Rascata?
Yes.
Ms. Pedulla?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Van Denta?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Chairman Bartel?
Yes. Joel, filing this form, I'm just going to leave this with, uh, Tina, if you have to sign it, with your chances, is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Now, having completed the application for preliminary plat for the Roundland Street major subdivision, uh, we will open the public hearing at eight thirty-four P M. But again, ask anybody that wants to address the board to you, the Zoom, Wave, or Q and A functions. Text Bill Lewis at five one eight three seven six, one eight three one, or call the town planning offices at five one eight eight four two seven six four.
Chairman Bartel?
Yep.
Yeah, I've got a text, uh, from eight twenty-seven from Mrs. Belmonte. Uh, it says, just wanted to thank the board, uh, my computer cut out. Not even sure how, uh, you voted. I think it, uh, was a yes. Uh, I had a horse loose running outside. I'm here now, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, uh, for their time. If you could let, uh, let them know, that would be, uh, great. Thanks, carry on.
Can you get back to her, Bill, and let her know what our decision was, and that we will have to find her, Mr. Chairman, by closing this this morning?
I sent her a text back saying she was a guru.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, I don't see any Q and A. And I don't see any hand raised. Does anybody want to make any comments on the Roundland Street subdivision? Two people on the phone that are still here, Bill. Outside of that, I don't recognize any particular people that way that's commented today on this report. Got any texts or anything, Bill, on Roundland Street subdivision?
No internet. That is, yeah.
Okay, well, um, there's no public comment at this point. Um, however, I am, uh, going to recommend that we keep the public hearing open. Uh, the last minutes, middle of this afternoon, uh, I think was a substantial change in the project regarding, uh, proposed dedication of open space, uh, approximately five acres. Now, Tina, did you get that out to all the board members so they see it again? Tina, I'm you.
Yes, I did send that to all the board members.
Okay, but I, I know myself, I mean, the letter was addressed to me, I didn't get it directly, I got it through Tina and Joel. Uh, but we need to have a discussion with the town board on, uh, on this proposal. We need to have a, uh, discussion with highway department, migrational department. This is a, uh, substantial deviation from what, uh, we had. I thought we had very clear in our minds that the commercial portions of this property, or potentially commercial portions of this property on Route Fifty, uh, were not going to be part of this review. Uh, we were concerned early on about possible segmentation of the seeker. Uh, and this was kind of prized to me, and we could come in here and such a, um, such a proposal. But I'm going to recommend that the, like, the public, everybody not closing, giving a little bit of, uh, public a little time to, uh, take a look at this, possibly make comments on it, and, or make a record thing. It is up to the planning board to decide whether or not we will accept, um, space of recreation lands, or, or, uh, of that. So, um, we need to do a little bit of consultation. Wisconsin, do you have any, um, thing to give us, or some background on why this proposal is coming first at this point?
Yeah, we, uh, apologize for it, uh, coming in late. It is something that the applicant's technical with the parcel, of that perhaps that land, uh, would be something that the, uh, the town and the board would consider, uh, as an open space area. If I, if I could share my screen, I could just, uh, uh, show you that area, if that, uh, please, or just do one, uh, go through, uh, through that, uh, requested screen share, hopefully.
All right, yeah, we should have it, right?
Okay. Um, so this is the, uh, the overall parcel in, in the, uh, the eastern portion of Route Fifty is in this area. We have Roundland Street over in this area. Uh, there's a five-acre chunk of land at the end of the, uh, the cul-de-sac. Uh, it has a good amount of upland area, and it also has the street corridor going through it, which, uh, we think is a nice environmental feature that could be part of an open space area. Also has some wetlands as well, but, uh, the, the majority of it is, uh, upland area. As far as access to the parcel, uh, could be done through the, uh, the stone water management area and the access road that we have in that, uh, that particular area. So, again, I apologize for the late, uh, submission on this, but, um, the applicant's take a look at that parcel. Uh, that could be a, a good potential area for, uh, active and passive open space, either now or in the future. I thought maybe that might be a benefit to the town, the town might want to, uh, uh, to consider. So, uh, that's really all I have on that, but I don't know if, uh, any of the board members have questions on that particular aspect of the project or any other questions. I think outside of this, we're, we're pretty well, uh, squared away. I think all the technical comments with N J, uh, have been addressed. Uh, we've responded to all the technical comments from the village, uh, related to the water. We're just waiting for a response back from, uh, from them, but I think, uh, from a technical standpoint, we, uh, I think we're in good shape on the project at this point, so, here for any questions the board might have. Thank you.
The board have any questions on the project at all, or this proposed open space identification? I know we haven't had a chance to really, all in overboard, so any, Joe?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um, uh, Mr. Lansing, can you help us understand how you've been at this basin, why this basin, and why this arrangement? Uh, so we can understand, uh, what you were, what you were thinking?
Yeah, as far as the, uh, selection of the parcel, it was, uh, it was an open area on the, uh, parcel, an area that, uh, was not previously proposed for development, yet it's a good upland area, again, with, uh, uh, excuse me, street corridor, and some natural features, uh, incorporated into it. Uh, and we thought with the access off of the, uh, the cul-de-sac, uh, through that, uh, uh, access road for the basin, you know, we thought it could be a, uh, a good location for something for the town.
So, the only access, Scandings, from the cul-de-sac?
Correct, yes.
So, there's, there's no, I jumped on Fifty at all?
There is that, no.
Any other board members, do you want to have any other questions?
Uh, I do have a question about the access from the cul-de-sac. Is that through your utility easement?
Uh, that's, um, there is a utility easement in that area, uh, but there is also a, uh, access road, uh, that would double as a, an access road for, uh, the, uh, maintenance of the basin, and that could be extended to a certain set area as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify it in my mind, and I haven't had enough time to review it all, so I'm just asking some simple questions, you know?
Sure.
So, that, so that wouldn't be the utility easement, or that wouldn't be the utility easement?
Yeah, we, 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 uh, that utility easement does dovetail in with the, uh, uh, the, uh, the access road, so it'll be all encompassing at that point in time.
Right, so that utility easement, is that a separate parcel, or is that a part of the other property?
Uh, that is a part, that is on the property, so it's not a separate parcel, it's just an easement over an existing parcel.
Yes, I would, I would think that's something that, uh, the board would have to consider, to have an easement over somebody's property to, uh, a public land, seems like, uh, uh, seems like a precarious situation to, to put the town in, when there's no official access other than an easement across the person's yard, as they're, you know, playing volleyball, kickball, and so forth, in their backyard. That might have to be something that would have to be thought about, uh, by the town, I would, I would think. I think that would be a concern I'd bring to the board, that you'd have to have, you know, the town board, that you'd have to have some sort of actual access to it, not just an easement over somebody's property.
I know, I, 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 I think, uh, yeah, miscommunicated on, uh, that. As far as the, uh, the easement, uh, there is lot twenty-two where there is a, an easement for a utility in that area. Uh, but then there's, uh, the stone water basin, which is proposed for dedication, uh, to the town, and that access road would be, uh, in that area, so they're, they're, they're right next to each other. Uh, uh, they are somewhat combined, but they're, they're, they are on different parcels, so, uh, the access to that parkland would be on town land, now controlled by the town at all times, so that easement would not affect that, or, uh, or, uh, the key depth from happening.
The, um, depth and slopes of, uh, attention, is it?
Uh, the depth of the basin is approximately, let me see, about eight feet deep at the deepest point, and, uh, the slope, I believe that's a one-on-four slope on the inward side of that. I gotta double check that now, it's either one-on-four or one-on-three. Uh, but the, the access road comes across, uh, that is, uh, relatively flat. If the town were to take, uh, this parcel, we could, uh, we could work on the grades in that area and have that, um, have that route way come down at a reasonable rate.
Bill Lewis, is that depth and slope required?
Do you say that again, do you?
Does the depth and slope of that basin require?
The, the depth one, yes.
Deep? Okay, I mean, I think there's a lot we need to consider here, um, uh, once again, since the public hearing is still open. See if anybody has any, was it, like, comment, I'm not seeing any hand wave from the public. Really haven't gotten anything. So, um, so at this point, I think we'll adjourn the public hearing, and we'll get back to, uh, we'll come back next month if, um, if the applicant is ready and can get answers from the town board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Could you please state the date and the time that the public hearing is adjourned to? Thank you.
Um, maybe else scheduled for next month at this point, so we'll, first. Just got to find out the date, and our next planning board meeting would be August nineteenth, seven oh five P M.
Thank you.
I don't need to have a resolution to adjourn, uh, adjourn at this point, do you?
Uh, okay.
All right, that's that, is there any other business to be brought before the, uh, planning board this evening? There being no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
John Little?
Chairman Alstark.
What did, did he saw those in trailer, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Please, we are adjourned, I want to thank everyone, we actually got a better time than I thought. Um, so I will, uh, stop in, sign off on the two, uh, resolutions that we did tonight, for Tina tomorrow, and get those out, and then, uh, actually, I'll send up to you, Bill, Kennedy, do a final quick review. Sign off on it. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening, and, uh, be well, safe.
Thank you, thank you all. Good night.